Well, I guess.
Don't just.
Netflix.
Netflix.
I muted. Because.
Play.
Three.
You're kidding.
No, it's just a class. All money in this world.
If she thinks you're out of line, she knows. She grabs her.
I hope so. I don't have any idea. So be study your thoughts, guys. Please. Just in the description. Why?
Follow me, y'all, everybody.
I put.
To leaders.
The United States doesn't matter. It's just repelled before we went to CS. A lot of the Asian. And I'm gonna. Into this call.
Thank you. We're in a meeting right over two minutes. Lock that in and the business meeting again.
Great. All right, everybody, and the focus of today's meeting is to be our first budget workshop. And so Josh has provided us some information. You've had your budget document now for a few days, so I hope you've had a chance to go through it on a line item format. We'll be going through it as a cost center format. But with each and within each cost center, you're welcome to ask any questions for clarity that you need to. Also, you have a ruler to help you keep focused because there's a lot of numbers here and a piece of paper, which is your parking lot. And I I give you a parking lot because sometimes there may be a cost center where you've got a question. And if you write it down, it actually might be addressed in another cost center and I'm going going down the process. So it's really there as a parking lot for things that you might be clarity on, thinking that it might come later in in our meeting today. With that said, I'm going to, does that process sound all right for everybody? Okay, so with that said, I'm gonna hand this over to Josh and he will start us right out with the beginning of our budget documents.
Hey, guys, so we can start off with our budget and the cost center form and start right at the top with total system administration. We're coming in with a proposed number of three hundred and eighty seven thousand eight hundred and eighteen dollars and twenty five cents. That is a thirteen point eight five two percent increase from last year.
Next one.
So. Sure, so our total administration, that includes our superintendent's office, our central business office and the school board office, except for I separated out the retiree insurance.
But retiree insurance, okay, is separate from life.
Yeah.
Okay, it's good, thank you.
Okay, so on the second page, the bottom, service system administration, that's a.
Yes, so that would be the.
Seven hundred and.
The. If you if you go by this document, that total system administration would be your three eighty seven plus the retiree four forty. I just I split those numbers. Because the retiree insurance did not change.
So if you look at the bottom of that, Kevin, the seven seven four.
Yes.
Is the offices and.
Retired.
Retired.
So that number on here is correct, that's good, thank you.
This this, yes.
Yep.
All right. Right?
I have a couple of questions. I I want to go to the back, wherever it goes. How many people do we have on the retiree insurance for us? And I know we've had a bunch that have passed away. That changed the number. Any?
We have eighty three people. And was. The number has fluctuated, but we still have liability. There is one or two employees that would qualify for that.
So if one of. Not how to say this. So if one of our retirees pass away, the spouse is still on it today, switch from a couple to a single or how does that work?
Yes.
How much difference is there on that amount?
I don't have those numbers on me and each person's different depending on when they retired. Some people get sixty five percent reimbursement, other people get an eighty five percent reimbursement. It's not a flat figure.
You picked the plan that you wanted.
Yes, yeah, and it's it also depends on when they retired.
And if they can get Medicare, that changes things too, right?
If they are eligible for Medicare, they are required to switch over to Medicare, I guess.
Do we know if that's happening?
We actually send a notice out.
Okay.
We had one this year since I've been on.
Okay. And you're and you're saying there's not going to be any increase on that cost, you don't think?
It will not go higher than that, no.
Okay. But it could be lower.
It could be lower.
Okay.
We have one left. It belong to it.
I'm sorry.
We have one left that can that can go on to it correctly.
But the number would be roughly the same as what it is now.
Yeah, that includes the.
Yeah, we we kind of, we take here projecting those, yes. Yep.
One more thing, Charlie.
Yeah.
I called earlier. I apologize, I should have called this weekend and said something, but typically we have our budget now and how much has been expended. So we can see that it's not been, you know, if we haven't used it, why are we budgeting the same amount?
Right.
Is that something that can be run and just sent to us electronically?
Yes.
And then it's an edit, the next one, we can go see if there's anything that jumps out, I guess. So I think we used to have it on the same sheet with the dollar signs, they used to have that, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
Actual.
Switching between two systems.
Okay.
I can run you a new budget report for this year and you can compare it.
Okay, yeah.
Josh, you're in a contract. How many more years is your contract? Is it a three year contract? It's in a three year initially.
No, it was a two.
It was a two.
Yeah.
Okay, and it's one year. Thank you.
One last question now. On the very first one. The superintendent salary.
Yep.
This looks like we went down a little, but that number should be a little high in that, shouldn't it?
It's split up among three categories, so you have the superintendent's salary, you have the curriculum and other admin duties salary. And then you have the special ed director.
Okay, so that's somewhere else, okay, okay, thanks.
Under your. Yeah, under your. And the business office.
Yep.
Functions. You had two thousand dollars for training last year and you're only asking for a thousand this year?
Yep.
Is that gonna be sufficient?
I haven't spent nearly as much as of the two thousand this year, so it's it's an adjustment.
Okay, thank you. You didn't give the school board a raise.
I didn't.
We really need to consider that, we're becoming family.
Let's see after they post, please.
So other questions on the total system admin or retiree section?
Okay.
We may we may come up with some things once we see what the actual.
Absolutely, you will, and so far I have written down for a question being to send you a a runoff of where we currently.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, sounds good. Hey, John?
Yeah, sorry, Josh, one more quick one.
Sure.
Under the granite street principal's office.
Yes, that's actually on the next section, so. Do my.
And thank you.
So for total school administration, that encumbers the Granite Street Principal's Office and the Sterns Principal's Office. So just those two offices. We have a proposed FY twenty four budget of four hundred and sixteen thousand four hundred and thirty four dollars and thirty seven cents. That is an increase of five ten nine zero eight percent from last year. So that would involve the hiring for a principal like Granite, which is currently advertised, the secretary in that office, as well as the principal, secretary and clerical ed tech experts. Plus supplies, travel, postage. Now I can take your question.
Yeah. When I find any, yeah.
May I ask what he's looking?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is this one of the adjustments that was made because it's showing three ninety one on the one I have? Total school administration.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm coming. Where's the other cross?
That's why you have a ruler, sir.
Oh.
It is a lot of numbers here. That just that really might help.
You're good, Kevin.
I think. Look, us.
Under Granite Street Principal's Office.
Yep.
Travel, we've got travel and we've got travel from professional development.
Yep.
Explain what the difference is.
So.
Done.
Which regular travel would be. In town between the two buildings if they needed to go to.
You had a person working both schools and they were gonna travel every day.
Yes.
For the nurse, you'd be reversing her.
Yes, and travel for professional development to like a.
Right, because it's under the principal's office. You wouldn't be paying.
No, no, you wouldn't.
Well, the. The teachers in question are encumbered under there. They're not. You don't think.
It comes out of the principal's office, not out of the teacher's line?
Yeah, that's a good question.
May I clarify?
Yes, please.
Um, the, so we sometimes pay employees an annual stipend for travel between buildings, so that would be under regular travel. And say either the secretary or principal went to a conference or workshop, that would come under travel for professional development.
I think I think Tom's question is though, Kim, because I hear you and agree, except he's wondering why it comes out of this cost center instead of instructional.
Because it is the principal and secretary, that's where their salaries budgeted.
Okay.
Anything related to that, principal's office is under there.
When Kim and dropping off a board back.
Yeah.
Going to the post office.
She has a flat fee.
Sure. We can get more information on that though, Paul.
I'm that's.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, as long as I. At one.
Okay, thank you. Question.
No, you don't know. First one.
Yeah, that's not, the granite one wasn't doing, I really add, it's high school, it's high school's a lot more.
Yeah.
It's the same idea.
Yeah.
Okay.
We're in the process, we're in the process of the principal at Granite. What if that number's not enough?
It is.
We budgeted high.
We we.
Budget is high, okay.
We did, it will be enough.
I've noticed, Josh, that we took the the audits out of Granite and High School.
Yep.
Is that not come on the.
No, so that that was for our. Student activity accounts that used to be audited by a different, I think Atlanta Days used to do it.
Thank you.
No questions before moving on to total regular instruction? So a total regular instruction would encumber your pre K through grade twelve teachers. They're split outside school or in the instance of Granite Street, it's actually split up into two separate categories. There's pre K through two and then three through five instruction. And then the middle school has six through eight instruction and the high school nine through twelve instructions. Now also encumbered in this cost center is gifted and talented. And our ESL nine through twelve. Right? So our total proposed for FY twenty four for total regular instruction is two million six hundred and sixty thousand one hundred and forty five dollars and ten cents. And we are up two point four zero seven percent from last year.
And we have taken into consideration that this is an negotiation year, so we have anticipated the potential increases there, so they're all ready to go back.
And I've also budgeted a group of an eight percent increase on insurance, we haven't received those increases yet, but I'm just budgeting for worst case scenario. Last year, for example, we we got had a two percent increase, so we're well within our expectation.
Are there any new positions? Yeah, thank you.
Is this is this number based on us filling every job?
Yes.
Because there's some, some things that are open, right?
Correct, correct, but if we have a position and we have any intention of filling it, we must budget for it. So yes, those are, and we've started a campaign of advertising for positions for fall, actually, right now.
Any insurance we should hear next month, right, April usually?
End of April, usually, well, usually I've only been here year, last year they informed me at the end of April.
A two, pre K two instruction. Textbooks, thirty thousand dollars this year.
Yep.
Eleven thousand dollars next year.
I had the same question.
My first question is, are we still buying text?
Yes.
Okay, so so then my immediate question is, how come, how are we having it by nineteen thousand?
The need just isn't there, if you buy new textbooks one year, you don't buy it next year.
At these early grade levels too, there's a lot of consumables, so that line will likely never go away and will pay with the cost of production of those. We are looking at new curriculum, but we've written some grants for that, there's a new curriculum across the board of any content levels is significant.
Right, when they buy textbooks, it will reevaluate maybe two or three years and see if they're still applicable, then they'll have to buy other textbooks.
Right.
I have to ask that question because as Louis can attest, when we closed the old Sterns High School, there were cases and cases and cases. Never been opened.
I believe that, this happened in the schools I've seen before too. You you over, you over order, they don't even get looked at, but now I think they're really looking at, you know, the quantities that they're they're buying and you know, inevitably one's gonna get dropped in a mud puddle or a dog's gonna show it out, right? So there'll always be something in that line.
Yep. No, I just. You know, nineteen's a lot, is. Isn't being dropped.
Right, it is.
And and Tom asked a good question, I'm assuming as the as grade levels in increases, they get older, the high school, that more textbooks would be looked at going over the computer than on a hands on textbook.
Yeah.
So you know what I'm saying, you know, and that way they can, you can get it modernized.
Right.
Just by a click of the button and it doesn't cost you replacing all your textbooks.
Right, I know with Dover, they prided themselves in going with all online textbooks and that was two or three years ago while I was working in UT, because we considered doing it with our middle school. And they found some drawbacks with that, some kids like the tactile movement of turning a page and taking notes and it was challenging for kids to like read entire passages on a computer. So I agree, it's modern and I, when we look at curriculum, there's always a a technology offer now and it may be to help teachers differentiate instruction, it may be supplemental material and it may be the actual material of the lesson. So they will, you're right, that component is very important, but I I think we'll have our tactile textbooks for quite a while, my personal opinion.
So I've seen where Texas have gone that route.
Yeah, a lot happened, there's certainly value in it, again, COVID changed a lot of things, right? And that's kind of one of them.
Yeah, can I get a breakdown? I I don't expect it, can I? But as as I've had many conversations with Shelley about this. I'm 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 actually at three five instruction right now.
Yep.
Okay.
You're going down stipends, ten thousand dollar stipends.
Yep.
I like to see a breakdown of all the statements that we pay.
You have a chart for that, I mean, you don't have it with us. Yes. But everybody likes to send up.
I can include it with the budget materials.
Okay, yeah, perfect.
Thank you. And then under three five instruction. Dues and fees, we have a big increase in dues and fees, from seventy seven hundred to eighteen thousand.
Yep. Yeah, that's for, I believe that's for Canvas, isn't it? Hmm. I think that's what happened. Is it should, we talked about putting that in the technology related, yeah.
Yeah, I just have it as a technology work here.
Yep.
That mine. Let's.
Pre K ed techs. So can I add a couple of those, that one is a one or two?
Well, right now we. We've added north to the program. So we want each classroom to have their own dedicated ed tech. Whereas last year it was like one dedicated and then uploader.
I'm sorry, I missed the question.
Pre K ed techs increased.
So we're changing that program next year too, we had a lot of students this year, great response to the program. And so we decided to make some changes there so that we can never have to turn down a student, we'll be able to take upwards of a little over forty, and so in order to be in compliance with the regulations for a program of that age, we'll have to have a teacher and an ed tech in the room.
So. In saying that. If we're going. Just just take. Forty.
Yeah.
We're gonna have more than two teachers.
There's two teachers. This is all preliminary, so I mean, I.
Yeah, yeah.
It is looking like there'll be two teachers in four sessions, so actually it'll be forty eight students that we would be able to take. And we did have to turn away a couple of students last year because we just had no more capacity to to support them safely and appropriately.
So we'd be going to like an AM and PM session.
Okay, so they won't, they won't be at all day.
Well, it hasn't.
Again, these these are, this is very preliminary, but we, depending on the amount of students we have coming in. But I mean, truthfully, we struggled this year, you folks were struggling before I got to where decisions were made late. Right, and because of that, we weren't able to kind of make adjustments, so we supported the classroom as best as we could for the needs of the students. But we're having conversations about lowering the number of students per session in order to give them greater attention for each of the activities of the day. There are new conversations, but we budgeted is based on two perons. If we don't do that plan, we still have to have two people in there. So, you know, so I mean, so like there's.
That's that's unchanged.
Where we are, yeah.
Totally agree with that, but as as having been an advocate.
Yeah.
For years and years to get it in here. You think that by only offering it a pack a day, we can still provide the service. Or or from what I'm hearing, you think we can provide a better service by doing.
I do, I I think we can be very intentional, very specific, target skill sets. I think the ladies are doing a phenomenal job right now, it is one, both are very, very busy rooms. But I think that if we could be more specific and more targeted with the children, that we could increase their skills and have them even more prepared for kindergarten than they will be this year.
That's.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, I think that's great news that we're looking at forty eight kids versus you know, the thirty that we have in all the other.
That's right, that's right, now if something should happen and we get a flood out of families and we don't have as many children, then we certainly can look at reconfiguring those the the rooms. All preliminary conversations at this point. Great questions, other thoughts on pre K to twelve instruction? We will be advertising for the middle school teacher. And that would come under this category, so might be a new teacher at a lower dollar amount, veteran teacher somewhere in the middle. But we anticipated that.
Because we did not, we we did that on a long term sub.
Long term sub correctly, yeah.
You said middle school, right? We're up to middle school, okay.
Yep.
Gifted and talented, that's the same feature in both.
Yes, it is, yeah, we share.
So her salary would be a split percentage thing as well, it's not two different people.
And English as a English as a second language teacher.
Yep.
That's a composition.
Percentage.
Percentage, yeah, okay, that same another. Same person, okay.
The rest of this person's salary is encumbered in the nine through twelve teachers. Do we need some more time or are we all set to move on to special education?
Oh, we're going to search for chaser that, we're gonna pay that one.
If. I'm good. Um.
A. Uh, gifted, kind of.
Of course.
And gifted and talented, pre K through eight. And uh gifted and talented, three K through eight, there there was an increase.
There's what?
There was an increase in the bottom line.
Yep.
And uh and then there was a significant increase in nine to twelve, am I right? You know, you know, forget, forget that, I'm looking at ESL. And that's a significant increase, but.
ESL?
Uh ESL nine to twelve.
Yeah, that's um.
Big decrease.
Hmm, yeah. Question was, is a fifty six percent decrease.
Yep. Uh for uh we're talking about ESL nine through twelve, yes.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's just a reallocation of her position, there's a percentage of it that's dedicated to ESL, so English as a second language. The rest of her salary is encumbered in the nine through twelve teacher salary line, so it wasn't.
But she's been kind of shifted.
Yeah, yeah, it must be, they give you a more accurate representation of what she does.
So I guess jumped out at me that beginning of decrease.
Yep.
In the nine through twelve, what is, what is being leased there, two hundred twenty five all these?
Um if it's a lease, it's probably the copier lease.
How many copiers do we have? I've seen all kinds of populations, but they're different places.
It's.
And that's exactly the same thing, I went over to Granite. And the copying person had been there the day before and it was like eight oh five in the morning, there was no copiers available. And I'm like, that's ridiculous, because I just looked at the document yesterday that told us what we paid for them, but yeah, there's, and they're all new. I mean, we have new copiers and pay for maintenance and leases, it's crazy.
I see five, is there five of them?
So it's it's. Total, but that number, if you add up all like all five of those. It's the total amount that we pay in the lease and it's just split even.
There's like left door for the two twenty five, is that what that was, the last one in the. Where do you see this language? Nine twelve, there's just says leaps, it was two hundred twenty five on.
I don't hear it.
I don't, I don't see it online. Nine through twelve gifted and talented.
You're in total regular instruction under special ed, yeah, so special ed. So yes, that's a lease for special ed.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. Hey, special ed, um.
Yes, so our uh total special education. Is split up amongst our special ed services office, which is our um. Special ed coordinator, uh our administrator. A special ed. Assistant special ed director salary, sorry, mouthful. And our special ed teachers, our ed techs. Uh in both resource room as well as self-contained, our speech language. And our OT. PT and cycle officers.
So there's a lot here.
There is.
And so Kevin, the question you asked earlier about um positions that were not filled, and that's the same thing here projected that we would hopefully fill them for next year.
So our proposed FY twenty four. Budget number for total special education is one million five hundred eleven thousand five hundred ninety five dollars and ninety six cents. And we are up nine point zero zero nine percent.
So that goes all the way to a diet.
Yes.
Yeah.
On uh. Total K through A special at resource room. Uh on the uh out of district tuition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Two hundred thousand.
So that's our uh money for kids piece. Uh if you look on our previous budget, it was under the special services office. At the top, tuition to private sources. All I did was move that line into a different cost center because it's better represented under that cost center. And we cut it by about twenty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
Welcome.
So where do we move that to?
Uh K through A special ed re- uh special self-contained.
It's out of district.
Yeah, same one, it it's uh two hundred, it doesn't.
It's on top of the page, second one down.
So so Kevin, the reason that it's not there is because it's on the page prior to, and it's different location.
Yeah, and what's it under, which one's it under there?
It's under administrative, um it's out of tuition to private sources.
Yeah.
So we just take place it in a more appropriate.
Okay, and it's going, yeah, so it's actually, okay. Thank you.
Do you want me to point that out, Tom, can you find?
Yeah, I can't, I I found it on the first.
It's placed right here.
Yeah.
On last year. It should be right here. His looks different. What was that?
One more page, one right on top.
Right there.
This is different than mine.
His is different, why is yours different?
You got me.
We got teeth for a rock.
This is correct, tuition to private sources.
On these match up.
Yeah, mine is like.
Uh it's a sixth page and second one from the top. What page is this?
Two hundred.
You don't have any.
I got you.
I found it.
Yeah.
Out of district tuition. Okay. And this is your open, yeah, right here. Yep, same document.
Uh, okay, now I can ask my question.
Okay, so good.
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
It turned twenty last year. Does that? And I'm asking this out of stupidity because I don't know, I thought I I. Thought I followed that one when they brought its piece in. I thought we got a reimbursement from kids piece.
Get a discount.
We got a discount, okay.
And they do pay us for building.
Yeah, but it's a pretty significant discount because you budgeted for four students, so, yeah, so it's pretty good.
You could probably remember some of those, was it, is it Wellspring? That's the name of the place we.
Budget between a hundred and a hundred and ten or twenty thousand per student.
So it's a big savings, okay.
Thank you.
After all.
But again, gone. I had it written down on mine too, that it was something of.
So you go with that leases for for the two hundred twenty five dollars?
You know, I don't, you know.
And I was on the special.
Yes. Okay, uh which special? For the special services office? Is that it?
Well, it's under total regulated structure, special services.
Four thousand, no, it can't be.
Read about legal, legal.
For the copiers and special ed. Thank you, Kevin.
They pretty much have to, I mean, they do have to.
Jerry, what what is our percentage of special ed, is it still thirty five, thirty eight?
It is, it's it's um, it is fairly high, there's a hundred and hundred and one right now, a hundred and three.
We're at hundred, almost a hundred and thirty. About a hundred and twenty five.
Hundred and twenty five, yeah.
Yeah, and yeah, and we just had, we have a new student that just moved in with an IEP.
Yeah.
That starts.
So it's one twenty six.
The exact number will be on your board report.
That's less than thirty eight, nine percent, so we have four hundred and some kids, right?
In uh in the special services office.
Yep.
Okay, special. Now we've got. Administrator salary.
Yep.
Especially I coordinated salary.
Yep.
And then we move down and we have. Tuition. From administration, administrator.
Yeah, yep.
What's that?
Uh so that would be. Classes and getting reimbursed.
But that's tuition for classes.
Yes, yeah.
And I was putting that under, okay, now, I get it, the other ones to travel, okay.
And one of the other two must be partially Dr. Lane's salary.
It's gotta be the fifteen thousand I asked a little earlier.
Yes. Have dues and fees gone up in everything?
Just about.
Because we're joining more things or because things have just gone out?
Has just gone up. MMA, we definitely are involved, and that's almost double. Better fact, we just got there anticipated, I don't know if you even saw it, it just came out like at the end of last week, they sent us a notice, I'm just so you know. These will be doing May, they've gone up, so.
That makes sense because. MMA, through MMA and that that doubled.
Yeah, yeah.
And that's addition too, so that would be more of a stipend.
This.
Makes sense.
Right, I think, I want to make sure I said that right, the special ed coordinator salary is actually a stipend.
Yeah, yeah, they, it's uh for having over honor meetings. I'm getting nods from Jolene, so it must be okay.
But it's a stipend, okay.
Yeah.
Just because I don't know. Under special ed. Homebound hospital.
Yep.
Tutor salaries, a thousand dollars, a thousand dollars last year. We have that many of those, is that something that we do often or just an occasional?
It's pretty occasional, but we got, have it in there just.
And someone that's like in the contracted services part, that would be if we have a student who has to have a program that's outside of our physical facilities. Like not a tutor here, but somewhere else, like so we pay Baymore contract and they provide us services.
Okay.
Right now, we're seeing one twenty six special ed. Are we anticipating that to go up or down or?
I mean, I don't, I don't know how you can anticipate that.
Going up? No.
It's probably. Yeah.
Quick, quick.
And there's. K through A special at homebound hospital. No, no, uh. Um that would be. K through A special, okay, contracted services, yep, uh last year was fifteen hundred, this year it's twenty five hundred.
Yes.
That's right.
That would be like the Bangor service.
That's who.
Yeah, so if we have a student goes to a junior or to some type of good value to um institution. We're still required by law to provide education, so we sign contracts with the Bangor school system because they're the ones who offer it. And um we tried, we had a couple this year. And their prices as well have gone up.
It's a thirty eight, yeah, it's a thirty eight percent jump.
Yeah, they have.
If we do that here, if we do that here. We have to adhere to.
Yeah.
That does come out that.
That does not, right.
Are those students counted as our school count?
Yep. I was here just days before October first, but we experienced this at least three times. After October first, so they become our responsibility for services, even though we. You know, don't get something for them until another year, if they're still here.
Okay, so that could change, those three could be.
Really hard to say, yes.
Going that, that that's when we're, if we say we have a student. Okay, for several days, and in their public education, we'd have a east uh a Bangor teacher go in and that's that service.
Yes.
Gotcha.
Yes.
And we can either provide the curriculum for them, or we can say Bangor will provide the.
Yeah, they send us what they've done when they come back, yeah.
Yeah, and we have to send them.
Yeah.
There's weekly communication.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just wanted to know how they were.
Yep.
In the nine twelve special ed reasons. Special ed teacher salaries. Is almost sixteen thousand dollar.
We had some moving around um with the special ed teachers, so that sixty four. From last year was one and a half teachers, now it's just one. And that half is moved into a different special ed line. Okay, it it she was split between two schools and now she's done.
But we've still got enough money there, and if we have to. I mean, we've still got enough money to fill the open slots that we have.
Yes, bringing that, yep, correct.
And those, and those are still being advertised. It'd be like your job. Those are still going out.
Yes.
And so that's the same thing on nine twelve. Self-contained, that went down.
Yep.
Again, but because.
Yes, different people taking on a different class, essentially.
But like you said, it's budgeted by the locations for next year.
Right, we've still got the money if we, if we fill those divisions, we're still.
Yeah, we're not. That went up considerably too, right?
Which one are you looking?
I'm looking at the bottom line, total nine twelve special ed self-contained. It went up. Twenty two percent, almost twenty three?
Yep.
Okay.
So ed techs um moving in from other lines um. As well as. Yeah, no, it was just like.
I don't know if this is a place for this question or. As Kevin said, that's. A big concern in that one. But I know that. I felt that I, we as a board wanted to do along with our ed tech salaries. You accomplish something in that one. Uh did you accomplish something?
Yes.
Along those lines.
Yeah. Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, we haven't signed on the dotted line, but it's gone very well.
Well, we all, we all heard that loud and clear at the at the conference.
Well, we would. If you keep up, keep up with it, you can understand that. Maybe. They are certainly greatly appreciated, but maybe not financially appreciated as much as you know.
Yes. I agree with you, Kevin. We appreciate them, but.
But we don't, yeah, yeah, I'm saying, I said the same thing you just said, financially, we have to appreciate them, so they do a lot of work. I'm Tom and I both, I think we both agree on it. They do an awful lot of work.
Yes, you know, and I, that's why I didn't ask anything on that. I figured that's what it's been increased.
Professional development will be supported. There's some, there's some good moves there.
Yep.
Yes.
Charlie, how many EdTech one on ones are there?
Julie, you know what?
Do you have? Four that are signing. But one of them is now being homeschooled right now.
Did you hear that, Kevin?
So three right now?
Yes, we were as we were as high as.
Yeah, we have had a lot of shifting this year, for sure.
We have.
Now, are we talking?
Their I E T actually states.
Are we talking out of the south game room or are we talking all together?
Oh.
Yes, all together.
Between both buildings.
He said his eyes five.
Right. And looking at reaching coming up, I know there's potentially two. That. Might need that because right now they're only getting half a day. Because of not needing some support for them, provided by.
All right. Nine twelve special edge speech and language.
Yes.
There's an increase in the teacher salary.
Yep.
I expect. But there's also. A big decrease in insurance.
Yes. Go ahead.
Um, the teacher dropped the insurance, so we don't need to.
No, I don't want, no, okay.
Yeah, it's good.
That's at ten thousand you're talking about, Tom.
Yes.
Okay. And that's why we've got a nineteen percent decrease. Number, yeah.
Now, we all talked about. Contracts and.
My numbers, I really, they did pay a lot.
Services. Going up.
Yep.
But yeah, on contracted psychological services. There's no increase.
So we get money from local entitlement to support that as well.
Because I noticed on the contracted occupational therapy.
That went up.
There's a million.
And that is uh due to us no longer having an occupation.
Yeah, we didn't have one this year, right? And we didn't, and we contracted it, right?
Yes.
And we're gonna, is that jump because we planned a higher one? Or we're gonna contract it out, we're anticipating. That increase.
Um, it that it's fair to say both. Uh, we're uh, we we raised the contracted occupational therapy. In the event that we do hire someone that has a little bit more experience and can take the higher.
And that money would cover fifty thousand.
Correct.
How often do we need an occupation sort of result like?
Um, before this year, last year, we had a full time and we also hired contracted out. Three days, full three full days as well in addition to that. And right now, we are taking those same students plus new students. And. Doing it with two, three days, so we're actually down trying to get all of those services. The other thing is, is last year, we also for speech and for OT. And for PT. We provided the. Um, kind of the precares, their services. Through hours and then we build. CDS. And got reimbursed for their services. This year, we are not able to do OT. And we don't have any PT, any PT prepares. And we both in, we haven't been able to do speech. We have been able to dismiss a couple of speech students. In order to pick up a few of those precares, but that just happened recently.
And we probably contracting involved also, they have an OT still. I don't even know that.
No, I I know I've had a lot of people asking people that they know. To see if they would be. They would be willing to come aboard.
No, they all have. In addition, we tried that once before. That's the problem being.
Going OT is, the rate covered this year, is it covered over Zoom?
No, it was actually covered in person, speech was Zoom, we have to speak. The day after the board meeting that I took, it was a top priority, the next day, we second therapist for three hours to cover. Our remaining students.
We actually do have an OT person that comes.
Yeah, yes. No, OT is not Zoom.
So that person is actually doing that hands on.
Yes, yes, OT is hands on, our speech being done. Uh, our additional speeches, we would tell up there.
Yeah, so you must. Have a EdTech assigned when they're doing that.
They, yeah, they usually go into one of the special bedrooms to be able to be covered, so. And they usually use headphones and you can see the screen and interact. And that's. It's a huge budget and I understand that and I wish I.
And there's a lot of, you know, obvious, you know, state federal guidelines for this program, but there's also other ways to look at different models. And so Jolene being new this year and myself meeting her in this position, we've talked about some of these alternative models. Which I personally have had successfully, you know, there are different ways to provide speech and different ways to provide OT PT. That um if you're in an area, it when I was working in the unorganized territories, we struggled with getting these services just like here. And and it it really, you don't really have to be rural to struggle with these services because there's not a lot of people available. Um, so we have talked about different models and we will continue to pursue conversations like that.
We do want to make sure we provide the services.
Uh, one of the things that we've talked about is the idea of um like a language service, not our tech, but a language service. If you talk with a student about um how you happen to say something like um hit cracker. And so we know that the teacher would, the speech teacher would say, um please give me the cracker. Put all of the syllables and whatnot in there, but then the classroom teacher knows the student working on that. So it is just a one on one session that happens twice a week. The teacher's involved and understands that this child is working on language development and so they start repeating things. Yes, that's right, Shelley, pass me the cracker. So it's speaking. We can, in that model, we can help teachers continue with that type of like therapy or development of students too. We just have to talk more about it and be intentional about it. And a lot of teachers are anyway, because that's what they do.
That's what.
Right.
And we have a lot of kids with art too, as well, and in order to accommodate them, we've. Taken them down, um like if they had a thirty minute session, we did it for fifteen one on one. Instead of doing group. Because they can get more trials and more practice than they would in a group setting. They might get five times as many word practice with the sounds that they're having trouble with. And hopefully hoping to get them dismissed sooner with those skills.
Right. Good questions.
No, you're okay.
Other thoughts on special education?
So our next. Topic of the session would be total student and staff support. Uh, this one spans a few pages, so bear with me here. It covers K through eight and nine through twelve guidance. Health services. Technology. And the library. As well as. Extracurricular and co-curricular activities. So our proposed F Y twenty four budget amount for this cost center. Is four hundred seventy five thousand, four hundred three dollars and sixty eight cents. And that is a nine point five, six, eight percent increase from last year.
So that starts on the bottom of. Total. Starts with total K through eight guidance, right?
Yeah.
So K nine, um. Nine twelve guidance.
Yep.
I'm gonna twenty six hundred dollar increase.
Yes.
Technology related supplies.
Yep, so that is for a uh new program uh called Naviance. Is for a career. Uh, training, skills training, believe.
Guess what's not for, not for computers.
No.
No.
Is that nine, you said nine twelve guy?
Nine twelve guys.
Technology.
That's a program that we have not had before.
No, we just got it this year and we were able to get it through um one of our, or a couple of our staff members actually applied for the MacGracy. And they will be used that. Purchase this program.
What's a med tech salary? Five thousand dollars.
Yep, so it's, it would be a portion of an EdTech salary to uh be trained in. It's like distribution, thank you, and uh just to be another person. Uh, that can handle. Medical events as they arise.
It's very.
We feel that we need. Three people doing this now?
No, um, we're. We're looking to, because um one person was paid for my grant previously.
Yes, right.
Right, so we're looking to see what the configuration needs to be next year and that's why you see uh med tech. Um, because we're gonna kind of change the job duties and um we're going to locate. The skill set in the buildings where we need the particular. Um, assistance to students.
Will we still have that? Person out of the S R.
That was a two year position.
And so that answers that question.
That's the five thousand now when you're talking about.
Yes.
So you'd be splitting out among two people probably?
Uh, no, the five thousand would just be for one person, but it'd only be a portion of their salary.
It would be be an EdTech.
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah.
Good idea, good idea, okay. That was my question, because I thought that that other one, but I didn't know how long the S R grant was.
Right.
Person.
Right.
Yes.
Again, part of this thinking is all of my years in the unorganized territories, we didn't have nurses with degrees, I mean, everywhere in the role made. Um, so we all did medical training and you know CPR that, um the AEDs that. Uh, medicine and distribution, we got trained on those annually, it's all legal, it all works. And taking care of um people's rules, you know, we had people who knew how to do that, you know, that's an important thing, particularly at Granite, right? So all of all of those things with love. All of the services will be one hundred percent um there, it's just gonna look a little bit different.
Okay, no, I. I just want to be sure. Same page.
Yeah.
Uh, on that same line, on the health services.
Yep.
I see her supply line is about nineteen hundred to three thousand.
Yeah, that's. Um, we're getting into play, I'm sorry, we're getting into play our um our raw boxes, um where there is um. Making sure that we're all set for like incident type training incidents, um we've done some extra training on it and we have purchased some supplies. For it, we're putting to go back to all classrooms and all rooms where children or teachers might be. So we have put a little bit of money in that direction. Um, also, a year ago, I'm told that there wasn't enough money budgeted for some of the um. Equipment that she provides to the sports teams, because she provides full packs. I was actually standing there, I think it was Thursday, when she handed off a bag to a Mr. Wade for his trip to um elsewhere. So she does a really good job keeping all of their packs full of all the essentials and things have just gone up a little bit. And costs.
Well, my question was.
Oh, sorry.
Along the other, oh, no, no, that's fine, but my question was along the other way. I don't think that's anywhere near anybody.
Yeah, we, Kama and and um Katie have really shopped hard for, because I gave them a list of stuff and. Um, and Katie had a list and we really worked hard to find items and we're buying bulk Band-Aids and then we're separating them into ziplock bags. To help be efficient.
Well, I'm I'm very through.
Yeah.
And I will tell you. The five. At five. Our supply line is just.
Well, if you think.
Just breaking, you know, I mean. I I just want to make sure they have enough, because that's.
Yeah.
I'd like to see that. Okay, all right. Technology, K five. Knowledge. Technology related hardware. We've gone from eighteen thousand fifteen.
Eight thousand.
Eight thousand fifteen.
So uh going back to pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Those lines used to be a lot bigger and we were able to use the COVID money to um. Circumvent that and kind of get our uh supplies and hardware that way. Now that the COVID money is going away, we need to start building up those lines again. So we have adjusted his hardware lines across the board. To reflect um a gradual increase to get those lines back up to where they used to be.
Okay, and and I take it in saying that that. That's why they're broken up like the 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 six eight one is three thousand dollars. It's combined by unit, so that. It's really means. A bunch of stuff.
Yeah.
All right, go. Now, I can ask a stupid question. We talked about that there was a bump. And then we were gonna make reductions. We're just going through what's being proposed now and then we'll be making them after.
Yes.
Okay.
I guess unless there's something along the way like.
If it's going up, that's just, I just. Right, but I just want them to look at that line, if they think, if they're happy with it, I'm I'm okay.
Yeah.
I just think. That I would rather have them say, yeah, we looked at it and we're still okay with.
Yeah.
But if you think we need another thousand dollars, let's find it and. Put it in there after.
Right. Yeah. Yes, if you have thoughts along the way, certainly give it to us because.
I think I like it this way, this is what you propose and then, then we'll be able to see the numbers of actual.
Yes.
For the next meeting and.
Yes.
Then be able to. Make suggestions.
Yeah, uh, sure, definitely.
Our. Technology nine twelve. That's where the the whole salary is for the.
Yes.
Yeah.
I'll be using his contract. Thank you.
Just. I know we were talking technology going up in uh. Technology K two five, like a twenty twenty eight percent increase. But when you look at total technology six and eight, there was zero. Percent increase. So we were building it into. Elementary. To increase that budget line from eight to fifteen thousand, but in K six to eight. Didn't need to do that.
We increased it from three thousand to six thousand. But there is a change because you go higher up.
Yeah.
Sorry, I purchased professional services went down, professional training went down.
They offset each other.
Yeah. Okay.
Please keep in mind that this session encumbers extracurricular and co-curricular as well.
That's right, thank you.
Yeah, keep going.
Yeah. The K five library. That's an attack. Position.
Yeah.
Is that? Is that all that it does is? Is the library.
Assorted other things at the school, but that's the primary focus. Next one, Joe.
She helps at the in the front office too, she she also unless it's changed, she also used to help in the uh taking care of the cop here and things like.
Yeah, she still does that regularly. Yeah, she does.
So they haven't. Too many hands in it.
Yeah, that's right. Does a good job.
Under. Six, eight extracurricular athletics.
Yep.
Temporary free salaries.
Uh, so sorry, no, that's actually the people that work the chains, uh sell tickets. Uh.
For the.
Keep time. Could be basketball, football.
That's, you look at six two eight. Yeah, six, six two eight.
Okay. Six through eight extracurricular. Again. Uh, general athletic department supplies.
Yep.
From thirty five hundred to ten thousand one hundred fifty.
New uniforms.
Uniforms.
The contract and busing is is through Braggins.
It's kept ongoing. Always says like I wanna use you well, and the example is we had. Uh, contract go up in another system. And so he read it in the newspaper, so he came in the next day and said, I wanna work with you, like, you know, this kid doesn't have to be painful. So I know that doesn't answer a number of questions specifically, but if there's something that we need from him, I think we just need to have a conversation.
That whole budget only increased five up to. Two point two percent.
Yes, uh, well, no, no, yeah, I think I'm looking at the other.
I'm looking at total transportation. And it goes two seventy three for last year. Two seventy three zero six five.
Yeah.
And then it goes up to two seventy nine twenty two this year. That's the total budget, right?
Yes, but that. That's uh different from uh busing for athletic events. That's a different line. Uh, we will get to that.
Okay, I was looking at contract busing. Contracted, okay, I was.
Yeah.
Okay, yes.
Yeah.
I'm way down that.
Yeah, that's right, you're ahead of us.
No.
I guess uh my other question under. I'm still under sixteen extracurricular activities. We've got down officials, police and.
Yeah. The the cost of officials has gone up and it's harder to find them now.
Okay, that's just for official, because we don't have any police or ambulance at. To take games.
No, so it's it's for official.
This high school.
Just the way that the line is coded, it'll show up.
Yeah, okay. I want, I just wanted.
Yeah, cuz on nine twelve it's the same as.
Yeah, right, yeah. And I know a lot of times accounting, they do that that way.
Yep.
I don't find much of that.
Why they cancel all the uh? Ambulance bills.
Don't think Tom was in charge of that.
I'm not.
Oops, sorry.
And actually went down under high school. Going down three thousand.
Yep. I believe Mister Collins and he was having a pretty fine with. Trying to find junior officials anyway.
Yeah, that, yeah.
And the equipment didn't go up very much compared to the other because they got some.
Went up three thousand dollars, but I I I know. Or I remember it used to be. Uh. Football helmet had to have reconditioned every year, that that alone was not very expensive.
Yes.
Especially if you got one that's got a big head. That costs a lot, I remember that we had, especially it's. Well, we did do that.
Yeah, yes, no, that's true.
It was expensive.
What would be? This question, what would be best for? Extracurricular is quite like. Both your record activities nine twelve.
Music.
But, okay, yeah.
Just happened. It just happened this weekend.
Tennis.
I don't know how. Do we?
I know they have to go down there, so.
Yeah, but I think they're gonna buy private car, I.
Wait, I don't think we provide any. Busing back and forth for the activities that we share. So they're like you say by credit or. Parents.
I thought that's a good.
Yeah. Okay, everybody ready for maintenance?
Yeah.
Just a quick one, we asked us at the.
Yeah.
Last region meeting. The the last debt service, they have two more payments after this year. And then there there won't be any debt service left. Of a region, so. I don't know if you need to plan that in, but that's what they said, right, there was three this this one and then two more.
So is that that twenty eight thousand?
Yeah.
Okay. That's good enough.
Two payments, that's what they said.
Yeah, if you don't.
Month, that's what we pay. So when they had assessment, it's only the debt service we paid, there was nothing. Or instruction. Uh, we do pay for delta. There's another place I think.
Yeah, it's it's further down. So for uh. Facilities and maintenance. If I'm okay to move on.
Mm-hmm.
Um. That would encumber. The facilities, uh facility director salary as well as. Five janitorial staff. Excuse me, um. All of our fuel oil. Uh, gasoline for the vehicles, supply contracted services, electricity. Water and sewer. All that fun stuff. Um. For FY twenty four. Our proposed budget for facilities maintenance is one million. Two hundred sixty four thousand, three hundred twenty four dollars and seventeen cents. And that is just a point three seven five percent increase from last year.
See, I always ask, well, Louis, well. Are we, are we based on a great winter like we've had or?
No. That would be irresponsible.
Uh, it would be, yeah.
I base it on what what the. Average to worst. Kind of in the average to worst winter, um it typically doesn't vary though a whole tremendous amount. Um, but I I use the same. Figure for what. But our typical winter. On the on the worst side would be. And then that's ending with tanks full in the spring.
Yeah.
We with. We got big change in electricity between granite and place.
The numbers flipped. Uh. Yeah, when we were putting the budget together last year. The number for granite got put into Sterns and then for Sterns got put into granite, okay, this is just.
Okay. It makes sense.
So.
We only really so, but I am.
So they supposedly it's almost done. So we're, we haven't started receiving a rebate yet, but uh. It shouldn't be anytime.
So. Total operation of the old plant elementary, granted, went down. Yeah, I'd say. A little bit more, about nine and a half, nine point six. Okay. But the uh total operation of plan. High school went up six point nine. And I mean, I realize it's a bigger building than everything else, but um.
I think the most of that is the electricity.
Okay, that's how that, that's what, okay.
If you look at the overall dollar change. It's. Five thousand. From FY twenty three to FY twenty four.
You did good, Louis, but you couldn't commit it, you know.
I'm lower than everybody else. You're not lower than debt circle.
Dude, are we putting any money aside or do we have any money put aside to do something at Granite Street?
We. We will have more on that.
Yeah, we we can't answer right now, we don't have firm figures, but um we have been talking about a capital improvement plan and seeking out. Um, resources for that. We have some projects that we know we need to do, so we're trying to get that figured out.
Long as it's on the radar.
It's on the radar, definitely.
Yeah, cuz I like say, I talked to you about it, I've overlooked at it, pictures.
Yeah, and so our is deciding over the granite and actually, um, believe it or not, bigger than that is our roof, our pitch roof here at Sterns. Um, Louis can tell you more, but there's leaking that's going on down through um a couple of levels and in coming out on particle board. And so particle board sustaining a water leak is gonna be something that we will not be able to. Put off, so we do have. Three big projects that we're. Seeking um funding for. It, did I say enough about that?
I was gonna say, I know you must figure your budgets, I know you're gonna. Get a lot of work you have to do with the kindergarten area this. This summer, replace ceiling tiles.
That isn't, that isn't, that's stuff we typically budget for.
Okay.
It's all a general sale and sell stuff and. Granite Street is pretty minimal as far as that. Um. And even patching the roof by budget for the roof patches.
Okay.
We still have money for that stuff.
Okay. Cuz I get to patch every year, like kindergarten.
All of them do, that's not, that I know that's your focus, but. I could walk you through this building and show you. Probably fifteen areas that leak annually on this building. That we just bought with batch every year, I mean, it's, you know, I know granted it's the focus, but it is everywhere because we've got. Over almost two hundred thousand square feet of roof area.
Yeah.
That's a lot of roof area. And it, you know, it's main and it's a lot of expansion and contraction and harsh severe climate, so. Granted, it's not a lot, we got a bigger. Lot of area.
So in saying that. Should we be looking? Or maybe we are, should we? Looking towards state for. Some renovation monies.
Yes, we're looking into the revolving funds, um, your system hasn't applied for those before, they're already awarded for this year. Um, and there are um. Thresholds, there are points hoops you have to jump through in order to access those and honestly, from just my time being on here and looking at. As some things here, do you want to qualify for this year, so we'll try and get ourselves in a. Better situation so that we can qualify in the future.
Okay, thank you.
And we have quite a few projects with S R still, right, the elevator and.
Yeah, we, we.
Yeah.
Big ones that were. Accomplishing, we've gotten a lot done, we've really gotten a lot done.
Backlogs, elevators, a lot of big things, heating system.
Interesting if we had the. Anyway, I digress.
Are we all set to move on to transportation and busing? So. Um, this cost center is uh just the one category, student transportation K through twelve. Um. The changes that you are seeing. Are uh reflected in that we've added back in a mini bus driver salaries. To utilize our many buses because they're. Currently not being. And our um vocational busing provided by another school, that number came from um Medway. So um, just a contract thing, Medway buses are kids to reach in.
Under contract busing town runs. Would that be uh Braggden?
Yes, yeah, and I haven't received a new contract form, so these are based on current numbers.
Okay, that's why it looks so nice, it hadn't gone up.
Yeah, it might go up.
Yeah.
Um, I'll reach out to uh, first this page and see where is that with those.
I looked at them, I said, oh, wow.
Nice, right?
Yeah.
So we've got contract and busing to town runs, contract busing to state runs.
Yeah.
Would would that be like if we go self? Do we get reimbursed, we go out of town? The students?
Yes.
Like we would Smith Pond or Southland or Turkey Hill, we get reimbursed from the state for that.
Okay, alright, we was looking at it, different man, thank you. That makes more sense.
So that number would wash out in our revenue, right?
So our vocational busing contract is nineteen thousand. Who do we pay that to?
Right, can you bring D spell it off?
Yeah, uh, and then the vocational busing provided by other school is paid to Medway.
We tried to make a deal for them. Where their students could come here. From the sports and stuff, they're not have to pay. If we didn't have to pay for the bussin.
Against when? So you're looking at hiring a new minibus driver?
We.
Not necessarily.
Just having the money there.
Yeah.
We have a couple of people on staff, um, properly licensed, though, we might be able to use.
Yeah.
So, just, so I'll get it straight, I know you've already said it. Vocational busing contract, that is through. And vocational busing. Provided by other school is through.
From here to east and picks them up and he's to bring it home. Do we have any uh, superintendent swaps? There used to be an agreement, did they, did they ride, they don't ride the bus going back or something? You know, I think we had that set up.
That I'm aware of is one of an older student, like I would say junior and drives car.
Okay.
And the other one is a.
Elementary.
Yeah, it's a pre K or K, which comes with mom.
Okay. Yeah.
Are we all set to uh, proceed? Uh, the next cost center, uh, there's no change, it's our debt service. Um, I think we have one more payment. Out on that, that ends in twenty twenty four, I believe.
Was that the thoughts to take out to fix the other things, the roof and all that?
Different, just to be all go, right?
This is heating systems.
So this, this debt service, that's. Now, that's gonna be done next year, you said?
Uh, yeah, it ends in twenty twenty.
And that's all the money we. As of now. So we're trying to get that free, right now.
Yeah, yeah.
That's why I was asking if they were looking. Because that would pay it off. Yeah. And if, if the region three, if the assessment is done. Or.
Two years.
Two years.
But it's, it's good to have that.
Really, we don't look.
No, it is.
We're really not looking good, I mean, we're looking good, but we're not as far as. We should have some.
This is a big job.
Yeah. And then the last um, section, all other expenditures. Our local appropriation for adult ed, provided by the town. And our local appropriation for our student lunch program provided by the town. We've asked for an increase from ten thousand to fifteen thousand due to the inflation of uh. Yeah, that includes the budget.
The total appropriation, uh, the local appropriation for adult ed.
Yeah, who do we pay that to? Region, I believe.
Is that for region? Was they use sixty seven, correct?
Yes.
No, that's not, it's, no, it's the things we offer, it's the well then, whatever they offer down to the adult ed classes. But it's not.
Oh, okay.
That's what it is, I would tell you at region. So, I choose sixty seven, cause there was questions about. Why the hell did you get rid of uh, adult ed, it's been going since the mill went down, two thousand and seven or eight. No, no, we had a Ronnie. And she passed away. Uh, but there was questions and I think Shelley had a meeting, uh, but it is, uh, K tech is. Has it, um. They're running it through there, they don't get any money to do this, so they brought their service to the area. So any of our kids, uh, that drop out, they, they sign for, there's quite a few people that. Come and look for the high set, that's the old GED, so it's available there. But some of the cost, is they, they make nothing, or they say do this, just bring it back to the area. Uh, but like, uh, there was questions about tutors and stuff and. That's, it's quite a cost for us to ring back about that.
Oh, yeah.
What we figure a hundred thousand?
Yeah.
So there has been discussions and.
We have another meeting in early April, we talked about the same topic.
How many years has it been since we did adult ed?
Two thousand and seven or eight. When they, when we were cutting because of a mill shutdown.
Listen back, I took some adult ed classes.
That's one that hurts, cause we do have kids that drop out, we discussed that at the uh, Prop O Committee.
Can we get a number? I'm, I'm glad you explained that, that's a good, good, a good uh, thing to know, can we get a number of how many adult? Ed from our area, people we have going to region three to take about that. Yeah, yeah, be a question, we could have to get, would have to occur.
They haven't broken down by towns, I think.
Anybody else have any more questions?
The one you look, this budget right here, the way it's presented, you're looking at a bottom line, four point three nine, you say. You know, I was looking at inflation numbers today, for the last three years, not school, but. United States. Twenty, twenty one is seven percent, twenty two, six point five, and in this year up till March, it was six, six percent.
Will you say that again for me?
Uh, in twenty one, it was a seven percent, twenty two is six point five, and twenty three up till March was six percent.
Thank you.
That's inflation, that's if you just keep it even. And I know it's affected everybody here.
That's right.
And it affects the school and it affects your house, my oil bill, the fire, the bomb, and it affects everyone.
We talked at the beginning of this, to trim this down. How much do we need to trim, to be able to get what was first presented?
Great question.
You need to, almost one percent.
I was gonna say sixty two.
It was, it was three point four. It was three point four. Before I, before you changed it tonight, so.
Eighty thousand dollars, I'm showing here, so whatever that is, between the two.
Eighty eight.
Well, that's just fifteen, little more than eighty eight, eighty eight, one, two.
Is it, is that what you're wanting us to target?
Well, no, I just, is that what we're targeting, I guess that's my question, where do we wanna, cause we haven't even looked at revenues yet.
We, we don't have a particular target, that's kind of where you guys come in, um, where do you feel comfortable? At, and then Dr. Lane and I can approach the budget from that angle before our next workshop.
I think a lot depends on the uh, insurance, one thing, if it's not eight percent, it's three percent, that's gonna help a lot. In negotiations, is, is, is it gonna be a big drive, in fact, where we're gonna end up, I think.
Right.
Yeah, without seeing the revenue.
Yeah, it's.
But not much money.
Right, we had, do you have some of the revenue information here, Mike?
Yes.
So we do have some revenue information, it's just not solid numbers at this point. Our, our bidding plan is to. Get your input tonight on, like, if there's any business we'd like us to take a look at, um, to add or subtract. And have another workshop to present those specific areas of conversation, if there isn't anything. In a particular cost center to look at them, we wouldn't go through it like we just did, um. But some of the hard numbers aren't gonna be available for quite a while, potentially, we're waiting on the state. So, Josh.
Yep, so, um. For. Our local EPS. Which is mandated through the ED two seventy nine. We have one million, three hundred twenty eight thousands, seven hundred twenty four dollars. Local debt service. Ninety seven thousand, two oh eight. Local adult education appropriation. Three two oh five, three four. School lunch appropriation, fifteen thousand. And the local additional appropriation I have right now. As one million, seven hundred sixty one thousand, three hundred seventy six dollars, forty five cents.
Repeat, repeat that fully, please, Josh.
Yep, one, seven, six, one. Three, seven, six, point four five.
And that's the total. Total number.
Yep.
You tell me what the ninety seven two oh eight was for?
And then the rest would come from our additional revenues and whatever our carry forward is. Which we should have finalized by.
So on the, the EPS money. That one million, three, twenty eight, seven, twenty four, we're getting how much? We know that?
From.
Yeah.
Uh, three million, seven hundred fifty one thousand, six hundred thirty seven dollars and forty four cents.
And they did make an adjustment to the easy seventy nine, right, with our mill rate, mill rate went up.
Everybody's, yes. Seven to seven.
And the state's still paying the fifty five percent.
They, that's a great point, um, the state is still paying the fifty five percent in, if you watch the news, you see that it's. Significant uh, money is supposedly flowing into our system, and a number of meetings I've been participating in continually say. Um, so where is all that money? Because if we're still paying fifty five percent, if you've added a lot of money, where is it all? And it's in all kinds of other places, it's going to the technical schools, it's going to the colleges and universities. So there is technically more money put in for education, but it's not necessarily um, K through twelve education. Um, that's been a bone of contention at every superintendent uh, meeting that I've been to. Because they talked about winners and losers, if you've got more or less, we got less by a hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Sister and brother schools have gotten um, used to getting a million dollars, got six hundred thousand dollars. They're on the win side because they got plus. But like they say, that's not a win, when you're used to an extra four or six hundred thousand dollars, so it. So the message, the media message is that there's a lot more money out there for education, but it's already dedicated to other locations. And it's not K twelve schools. So yes, they're supposed to be paying fifty five percent, but the way that it has all shook out. Is uh, not necessarily favorable considering all the costs that were.
If the federal's still not being initiated on special ed.
I haven't heard anybody even mention special ed with this uh, funding this year. That's all, a lot of people not very happy with. The media is saying there's a lot of extra money and then us not seeing.
Dog lane, that fifty five percent, that would represent possibly the tuition they're paying for a bookcase, uh, technical college.
That's included in it, yeah, I can actually bring you a list of that, um, of where that money went, because it really has. Annoyed a lot of people who are doing what we're doing, looking to see that we've got good, solid programs. But the number is a little higher than we want it to be for our citizens, so there's a lot of people really taking a hard look at. At what the media is reporting and how we're having to explain that there's just not more money contributed to your school.
Are the private schools? Going into this part of money, I know it was the Supreme Court. But they had to offer it open to everybody or something, is anyone taking advantage of that?
There's, there's the big eleven schools and they're, they're called the sixty forty schools. And so the percentage of state contribution to them is the same, but it's at that sixty or forty rate. And honestly, I guess that makes sense because they are supporting a lot of public school kids, not that assume are going there as a. A tuition or a private setting.
Well, that's, and that's the whole thing, you know, the legislators, if you're talking to legislators, they're telling you you get fifty five percent. You know.
Right.
They're paying, they're spending fifty five percent, schools. But it's going across the board to schools.
Oral education.
And we can't forget when the law came into fifty five percent, it was twenty years ago. And so fifty five percent at that period of time covered a different amount of education. So it's awesome, they're at fifty five percent and we're thankful for that, but fifty five percent in a dollar amount today. Is not the same as when the legislator said, oh, we want to pay fifty five percent. I mean, just think of the math of that, and so, so we're thankful, we're getting fifty five percent, but the dollar amount. Isn't the same as when they intended, when they put that law into place. And at the beginning, there was thirty percent and thirty eight percent and forty two percent, and we haven't received the fifty five. For very many years now, but it doesn't cover what they intended it to with the first people who said that.
That fifty five percent is based on that point eight four ratio that we are rural. Penalty, I call it, but. But Portland and Lewis and again, one point two. On what they need or on some.
Well, that's right, I mean, they have other challenges of their own, their scale and scope is much larger than ours for sure.
The state grid is on a curve.
But it's hard, it's hard, especially in the small schools, to meet those ratios.
Right.
We need a budget here that. We need to be able to help citizens, bottom line, our EPS figure this and we're spending this. Now, it's your choice, what you wanna spend it on. We, we do the best we can to get a budget. And come in. With what we all agree is, is. A fair and equitable budget to, to do what we need to do. And then we know when we come up to years, under years, for sure, when we know for sure, when state DS button.
The EPS.
Yes.
They've made changes all the way up through July before.
Nowhere near as now. So it's, so it, we're not gonna really, we can, it's, it's gonna be best guess.
Yeah, uh, this, this year, for example, we did not get what we anticipated, or what we were told we were going to get.
Okay, so it's gonna be best guess anyway, on that part of it. It's gonna have to be, we can't wait till July to have a budget, not again. No, we gotta have a budget done in time, all I'm saying is that we've got to, you know. That's why I know, just, but the thing is that we're.
It's all gonna go with appropriations, so Kevin Mills said ten point two and. The other side is saying nine point something, so that's gonna be cut somewhere, so where's it gonna end up?
And all over our state, there's boards just like this, sitting probably tonight even, talking budgets and, and working with the same. Constraints that we're working with.
So you always said it's a crystal ball. You can work on your expenses, and that's what we need to run.
That's right.
Uh, but the revenue was had a mess, right?
So I had written down some of your questions tonight, and that's a lot of good questions, and some of the things that we can give you for additional information. Um, Josh or I will um, send you an email with some of this information, um. We actually ended up answered a lot of questions as we continued through the process, so there's not a lot of them here. Um, we'll reconvene next Monday, same time, same location. No, I'm just kind of testing myself, but yes, um, is there any feedback that you would like to provide to us? To Josh and I, as far as what type of changes and presentation you'd like us to prepare for for next Monday?
Well, just the, the one thing, send in what actual numbers I write now, so we can go back through.
Yep, absolutely.
I think you guys have a good, real good job.
Thank you.
Yes.
Is April eleventh? Motion to adjourn.
I'd make a motion.
We don't have to adjourn on a workshop, I don't think, yes.
So the board meeting.
We opened it.
Board meeting is April.
Yes.
That's our, we opened it, April tenth is going to be another.
Workshop, yes, for four thirty. Workshop, yes, for four thirty, right? Sorry, did we check, check?
No, no. Verification was great. Motion by Kevin second. All in favor? Ten and five all.